Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Special Meeting and Recognition for our Vice Mayor Irene O’Connell. This evening, we’re going to be hearing from folks in acknowledgement for our outgoing elected official Vice Mayor Irene O’Connell and her dedication and years of service to the city of San Bruno that she loves. At this time, there are some folks here in the audience that would like to speak. And what I would like to do is go ahead and start those folks representing Congresswoman Spears’ office. Brian and Katrina, if you would go to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Brian Perkins. Congresswoman Jackie Spears’ office, district director.
Katrina Rill, his sidekick, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it’s nice to be here tonight.
So Irene, we’ve got good news and we’ve got better news. We’ve got something for you from Congress, and the better news is it’s not a subpoena.[62.64][62.64](Laughter). But this is actually a statement that Congresswoman Spears has placed into the congressional record. So Katrina’s going to read you a couple paragraphs, and I’ll read you a couple paragraphs. And we’re not going to read the whole thing because that would take you too long, your record’s way too long. But anyway, here’s Katrina.
And it’s not a subpoena, and my favorite part to say about it is that your great-great-great-grandkids can look it up later, and they will find this document when they search for your name. So it’s going to be part of the history of Congress forever. All right. Madam Speaker and members, Irene O’Connell is leaving the San Bruno City Council after a remarkable 24 years of service to the community. Her departure marks the end of an era, but the beginning of a new path in the life of this amazing woman and civic leader. During all these years, I, Jackie Spears, have deeply appreciated her friendship and enjoyed working with her to promote San Bruno’s bright future. In 1995, Irene O’Connell was elected to the San Bruno City Council, serving her community with enthusiasm, vigor, and effectiveness. She helped initiate a youth committee and helped create an after-school program at Allen Elementary that has since expanded to five other schools. She identified $600,000 in flood control district funds that became available to help residents of the Bel Air community. She initiated the creation of the city’s Culture and Arts Commission with funding through a surcharge on building permits. The commission has installed a number of pieces of public art, including the Centennial Mosaic at the San Bruno Caltrain Station and a mural painting at the Centennial Park in San Bruno’s downtown. A park on Florida Avenue is authorized in large measure because Irene’s love for civic beauty is matched with a love of open space in San Bruno’s urban area.
And so the final two paragraphs read: Irene is the proud mother of son Joe and daughters Katie and Jennifer. Her husband Bill keeps her young, her mother Marina Kaiser keeps her hopping, and her community keeps her strong. Madam Speaker, for decades Irene’s presence in San Bruno has been as exciting to watch as a homerun at a Little League game at San Bruno City Park. Now, San Bruno’s mighty Casey is laying down her bat, but it’s time to give her an enormous cheer for her contributions to the team. San Bruno will long cherish the swing-for-the-fence public service of Irene O’Connell, Congresswoman Jackie Spears. Thank you.[224.12][224.12](Applause).
Next, we would like to welcome our very well-liked and appreciated for all the years that you’ve given and helped San Bruno and worked with Irene, our state Senator Jerry Hill.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. It’s wonderful to be here tonight, and my good, our good friend, Assembly Member Kevin Mullin is here as well to present a resolution, and he will do that as it arrives. It is not quite here yet, but it is on its way. But I think for me, the part that is so special is I have worked with Irene for many, many years. As a city council member for me, and a county supervisor, assembly member, and state senator, I have spent so much time in San Bruno over the last 10 years because of circumstances that we’re all aware of. But before that, we had a strong relationship working throughout the county on the regional boards and bodies that Irene sat on. And if you look at those boards, whether it’s CCAG or BASKA or Waterborne, if you look at the improvements, the impact, and the power that she brought to every agency she sat on, that is what was so obvious to me. It became so clear that she was a power and not a pushover because her interests were always for the betterment of San Bruno. No matter what the issue, she was there fighting for San Bruno at every opportunity. And it became very clear along the way. And the part that was so special is the fact that she did it in a manner that was respectful. She did it in a manner that was professional, and she did it in a manner that was effective. She got things done. And that’s what you want from a legislator, that’s what you want from a council member, and that’s what you want from a city representative. She brought all of that to every conversation, every vote that she’s made that I’ve noticed, watched, and appreciated over the years. So Irene, I’m going to miss you, San Bruno will miss you, and I just appreciate it, all of your hard, hard work. You never let up, and you never said no to any opportunity where you could be effective in helping San Bruno. Thank you for that leadership. We need more of.[401.31][401.31](Applause).
Thank you, Jerry. Now, I’d like to bring forward, we are going to skip the next speaker per request of the Speaker Pro Tem, and move on to the Board of Supervisors representing Supervisor Pine’s office. Randy?
Thank you, Mayor, honorable council members, and city staff. Supervisor Pine was sorry he couldn’t be here himself, he’s in Boston with his family, but he did ask me to come and express his gratitude and sincere thanks to Vice Mayor O’Connell. I have for you a resolution signed by all the members of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, and simply to say thank you for all your years of public service from all of San Mateo County. Thank you.[459.71][459.71](Applause).
Also, I did want to acknowledge some of the folks also that are here with us. Former Mayor Larry Franzella, former Vice Mayor Ken Ibera, former city manager Connie Jackson, former police chief Neil Telford, former library services director Terry Jackson are also here in the audience this evening, and so welcome and nice to see you all here. Next, we have Kirsten Pinoki, if you would, please.
Thank you for having me. Irene, I just wanted to take a moment and thank you for your 24 years of unforgettable partnership with Recology specifically. You invited us and made us a part, a very strong part of Operation Clean Sweep. You have always supported everything we do, and you’re always reminding everyone when we’re out in the community. And I just personally have appreciated your support. When I became general manager, I know it was a hard transition because Mario was definitely a strong manager and a strong friend of yours as well, but you supported me and helped me grow as a manager in Recology as well. So it’s with great pride that we present you with a cutting board with the logos of Operation Clean Sweep, Recology, and the city of San Bruno that says, “Thank you, Irene, for 24 years of unforgettable partnership.” So, we love you.[559.16][559.16](Applause).
As we’re still waiting, you just, Kevin, you just tell me when.[571.32][571.32](Laughter). Now, we’d like to introduce our Assemblyman and Speaker Pro Tem, Kevin Mullin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. The resolution is in my staff member’s car on the way. I told her not to rush, though, it’s raining, to be safe on the road, but she is en route, and the resolution will arrive for the photo op at the end of the celebration here of Irene O’Connell’s service to this community. It’s my honor to be with you to celebrate Vice Mayor Irene O’Connell’s accomplishments and contributions to the San Bruno community. For those who don’t know me, I’m Assembly Speaker Pro Tem Kevin Mullin, proud to represent San Bruno in the California State Assembly. More importantly, though, for tonight’s activities, I was a student of the Honorable Irene O’Connell. She was my sixth grade elementary school teacher. Neither one of us could have envisioned this kind of a night in our futures.[636.54][636.54](Laughter). But I most certainly was not going to miss this opportunity to applaud Irene and express our collective gratitude about her life and her service here, about how she’s impacted this community, not only San Bruno, but her impact has been felt, as the Senator indicated, on regional boards that have affected the entire county and region. Truly, the success of our state of California and the strength of our communities and the overall vitality of our society depend in great measure upon the dedication of individuals such as Irene O’Connell. She’s a native of the San Francisco Bay Area who has devoted much of her life to discerning the needs of others, her family, her friends, and her community. Beyond her love and care for those around her and her dedicated volunteerism in our community, Vice Mayor O’Connell has faithfully served for 24 years as a member of this body. And she and her longstanding colleagues saw this city through some of its darkest days and some of its best days, and we are so grateful. I am privileged to present that resolution, which is en route, on behalf of Senator Jerry Hill and myself, commending her for her many contributions to San Bruno, this county, this region, and the state of California. Bless you, Godspeed. Thank you, Irene.[721.13][721.13](Applause).
Thank you, Kevin. Now, I’d like to have the opportunity, I know former Mayor Larry Franzella wanted to speak.
Irene, personally, I’d like to just thank you for the years we worked together, and I don’t know of anyone that worked harder for the city of San Bruno, and you were the person I could always turn to and say, “We need a committee volunteer, will you do it, Irene?” And you were always there to do it, and you always did a great job, and much appreciated. But this evening, I’m also here on behalf of the Rotary Club of San Bruno. There’s a number of Rotarians here, maybe you could all just stand quickly so Irene can see your presence. You’ve always worked very closely with the club, you’re always there to help us with anything we needed, to help get things done in the city. We truly appreciate it. Just going to leave a little note with the city clerk of our appreciation. Thank you very much for your 24 years. Enjoy your retirement.[793.13][793.13](Laughter). Thank you.[795.13][795.13](Applause).
Thank you, Larry. Now, of course, I do want to give an opportunity to those that are here that may wish to speak. At this time, if you do, please head over to the podium. Please do not feel obligated, obviously. Irene would be happy to hear from you tonight, tomorrow, or in the next few days. So if anybody would like to speak, now would be the time to go to the podium.
My name is Mary Lou Johnson, and I’m in the community for 46 years. And Irene, I’ve watched you work in a lot of different ways, and nothing could be said anymore than what has been said. But what I really want to say to you, besides a gigantic thank you, is that many doors have opened. You have opened doors for hundreds and thousands of situations and people, and now a new door is opening for you. And I know that this is a path that’s going to bring light and excitement to you. And I have one of my favorite verses, Jeremiah 29:11, that says, “For I know the plans I have for you.” And I believe strongly that you have huge amounts of things that are going to take place, and I look forward to seeing those golden doors and those grandiose things that are going to happen. Thank you for all that you’ve done.[881.13][881.13](Applause).
Anyone else wishing to speak? I recognize you, yes.[893.13][893.13](Laughter). Very quiet and shy, Bill.[897.00][897.00](Laughter). We are being, it is live, so we, watch what you say, Bill.[916.56][916.56](Laughter).
Well, I just want to say, Irene, when she first decided she wanted to run, you know, I wasn’t high on the idea.[929.00][929.00](Laughter). But nonetheless, she did, she told, you know, folks, you know, “I want to run, I could do the job.” And so she talked to Tony Governelli. I don’t know if anyone knows Tony Governelli, it’s going back a ways, but he told her three things you need to do. You got to, I don’t remember.[958.44][958.44](Laughter). Do your homework, vote your conscience, and do what’s best for the city of San Bruno. 24 years. Good for you, lovely. Thank you.[978.19][978.19](Applause).
How appropriate it would be to follow Bill.[995.81][995.81](Laughter). Irene, I remember 1995, I was told to vote for you, and I didn’t. I didn’t know who you were, and I know I did not ever live that down. But I do have to say, even though we’ve had our differences, I’ve spent 22 years sitting on that dais with you, and I respected you that whole time. We’ve done a lot for the city together. You’ve done a lot for this city, and the city is better because of you. I was the one that you tapped when you had the idea about the youth committee, and I was so happy that you did that. You have full credit for that, and I think about you every time I drive through that park every summer and see all those kids. I almost got arrested one time because I was taking pictures of all the kids.[1053.63][1053.63](Laughter). But I tell you, we have vivid memories like they just happened yesterday. You know, the meetings that we had early on in 96 about what we were going to do for the future, and Irene came forward and said, “We’re going to take care of everything underground first.” And Jim and I looked at each other and go, “What?” And it was, you were a prophet. I mean, it worked, and we needed it. And ever since then, ever since, you know, as tough it was to raise rates, as tough as it was to do things that people couldn’t see, it was the right thing to do, and I respect you for that. I just only hope that you could have had a library during your tenure, but I’m sure you won’t, you won’t rest on that either. So, best wishes to you. It is really good to be off the council, to live.[1122.58][1122.58](Laughter). So, you are, you are, you do have a legacy in this community and will never be forgotten. Thank you so much.[1133.74][1133.74](Applause).
Thank you, Ken. And I did want to acknowledge the Honorable Wayne Lee, Mayor of the city of Milbrae, is with us as well.
Can I say something?
Yes.[1152.24][1152.24](Laughter). And of course, you already have Dan Quigg here, so he was waiting for you.
Oh, okay.
Former mayor and council member of the city of Milbrae, but...
So, we just, the city of Milbrae just wanted to acknowledge all of the hard work and sacrifices that you’ve made through the years. You’ve been a stalwart for the county. You’ve been, you’ve influenced not only just San Bruno, but you also influenced the county and many of our policies. And also, you represented San Bruno very well. And as an elected, I really, I appreciate that. It takes a lot of hard work, it takes a lot of sacrifice, it takes your family, it takes you away from your family, and your family is also to be commended for their support of you. But I think as a county and as your neighboring city, we’re very grateful for what you’ve done in your service. And though sometimes we don’t agree, we always agree that we work the best we can for our city, and you’re very highly respected for that. So thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor, and city council, for the opportunity to speak, and also to congratulate you on your retirement, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.[1232.83][1232.83](Applause). Go ahead.
Hi, Melody Tobin, Jane Calvert, and Jayden Cowgirl-McDaniel. We’re representing the Beautification Task Force, which Irene started. I’m an original member, it’s the first committee that I joined in San Bruno, it’s the first committee that Jane joined in San Bruno, it’s the first committee that Jayden joined in San Bruno when she could walk. And Irene was the first person to reach out to us when we moved to San Bruno, after, of course, Rose came to our house with the welcome wagon. So even though the Beautification Task Force may not live on without Irene, there are good things to come in the future with Irene’s leadership. So we thank you for the 20-plus years we’ve had with the Beautification Task Force and all the good things that we’ve accomplished, and we’re very proud of our accomplishments. And we thank you for where you’ve led us and all we’ve done as a group. We’ve grown, we have many generations, at least three, we’ve watched kids grow up through it, and we thank you for that.[1320.01][1320.01](Applause).
Joe.
Hey, Mom.[1323.01][1323.01](Laughter). I’m Joe, her son. It’s kind of weird standing here, talking about this right now, because like from, pretty much as far as I can remember, she’s been in the city council. I’m 33 right now, when I was nine, she got on, and I think my first memories of it were, dinner was a little late a couple times, so I might have been a little cranky about that. But from the beginning, I knew how important it was to her, so I tried not to complain too much. And it’s just amazing how, and I might sound a little biased, but just how much energy and emotion and heartache and joy and everything else this position has brought to her, and how it has affected everybody. I mean, everybody in this room and people that, you know, can’t be here, the whole city, whether they know it or not, has been affected by the Honorable Irene O’Connell. And before I get too choked up, I just, from, you know, that’s just her makeup. It’s family first, then the city, and then if there’s time, she’ll take care of herself. For the most part, she’s an amazing woman, and I just want to say thank you for everything you’ve done.[1407.15][1407.15](Applause).
Anyone else? Sayidah?
I’m the youngest daughter, so my very earliest memories were of City Hall and my mother doing all she could for the city. It’s, she was mother first and then city councilwoman, excuse me. And I know she’ll come through this and find other things to spend her time on and her energy and her love, but it’s just part of who she is, and I don’t know, I think San Bruno will be the same without her. Thank you.[1469.15][1469.15](Applause).
Sayidah? Sayidah?
I picked very tough acts to follow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council, for recognizing me. Hi, Vice Mayor Irene O’Connell. My name is Sayidah Stroud, and I am an employee of Skyline College. I’m also the board president of the San Bruno Chamber. But on a very personal note, Irene, I just want to thank you for being so kind to me. And your son mentioned how people are impacted by you, and they may not even know it, but I thought it was important that you know it, that you’ve impacted me in such a wonderful way as a working mother and someone who spends a lot of time not at home. It’s just really empowering to know you and to hear about all the wonderful work you’ve done for this community. And you’ve also supported the Chamber just by being so supportive of me and being so kind to me in the short amount of time that we’ve known each other. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Sayidah.[1541.15][1541.15](Applause). Not too long, Dave, not too long.
Dave Nysel, before I start, I just want to thank our mayor, who came to the activity against hate at Burlingame Library. I was so proud that he represented our city so well, and our city manager’s name was mentioned many times for suggesting that.
Dave, 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 this is Irene’s time.
I know, but I didn’t have to say that. I go back to your dad, who was scoutmaster at St. Roberts when I was assistant at Cressmore, and he taught me so much, and he had such a good reputation. Irene, what you’ve done during your tenure here is really incredible. When I was chairman of Park and Rec, you were our liaison twice. You helped me a lot, and also, again, on bicycle and pedestrian safety. I think of Operation Clean Sweep, beautification, I could go on for a long time. But judging a person, when you can earn having a good name, that’s what you have done, and you have a great name. Thank you.[1618.15][1618.15](Applause).
Nancy?
Vice Mayor O’Connell, Nancy Corral, San Bruno Community Foundation. As you know, next week, the community foundation will be honoring you, but we did want to acknowledge you this evening as well, and thank you publicly for all your support of the foundation. On a personal note, Irene, as a resident of San Bruno for over 50 years, I want to tell you with great love and respect what an absolute inspirational role model you are to me, to all who have had the privilege of working with you. You are all that’s right in this world, and this world is a better place because of your values. And I thank you for the privilege of knowing you and for calling you my friend. Thank you for your service.[1669.15][1669.15](Applause).
Okay, comments from our city council. Marty?
Sure, please.
Irene, I’d like to thank you and your family for your service and the sacrifice that you put up through all these years. As a father of a seven-year-old, I share that experience of being away, but I also share the importance of the service that we provide as council members, and I wish you the very best in all you do. Thank you.[1713.01][1713.01](Applause).
Irene, I feel like I’ve known you my entire life. Known your family for a long time, and I know that the dedication that your parents have, I respected them and I respected you. I’ve only had a short time to work with you on the council, but you have been an inspiration. You’ve been a form of knowledge and information, and we talk about something and we should do something, and you go, “Well, we tried that a lot of years ago, and it didn’t go so well, let me tell you why.” And that experience and that input is grateful. You know, you care about San Bruno. You know, the job that we do up here is not always easy, the decisions that we make are not always easy, but you always make the decision for the best of San Bruno, not personally but yourself, but for all of our community. You give back to our community, and you can see that in the passion in the things that you do. Showing up to a Clean Sweep day, seeing the joy that you have because there’s something that’s so important, it’s impactful, and it changes people’s lives. And when you spend a day going out and making the San Bruno look better than it did before, it’s a great, great success. So Irene, thank you for your dedication, your 24 years, and let me say, please, continue giving back to San Bruno because we need you.[1787.83][1787.83](Applause).
So Irene, it’s always sad to say goodbye to...
So, Irene, it's always sad to say goodbye to our colleagues. We lost Jim and Ken a couple of years ago, and now we're losing you, and it's, you guys were the council that I first was proud to be a member of, and you were all an inspiration. But you, I think most of all, I felt so much passionate and so much, just the way you made me feel welcome on the council when I first got on, it was, it moved me, and I really felt that you cared not only about the council, but you cared about us individually as people. And I've always respected everything that you've done for the city, but like I said, I really, you know, the human side, I mean, you were always, you were always there, and you cared about, you cared about us, and you cared about everything that we were doing. So, I just wanted to thank you for being not only an awesome colleague, but for being a friend and an inspiration and a mentor to me as I first started off on the council. I truly feel that you've elevated us not only as a council, but you've actually elevated our status, the status of the entire city. You've represented us well. Every time your name was mentioned anywhere I went, it was obvious with high praise, and it made me proud to know you and to be able to call you a colleague. So, I'll miss you. I'll miss having you here. I hope that I'll always be able to consider you a friend. And I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for the city, for the inspiration that you've provided all of us, and you've set an extremely high bar for the people sitting up here, and I hope we can live up to the standards that you've set for us. Thank you.
For myself, Irene, I have known Irene's parents before I knew Irene, when I was on Crime Prevention Committee as a young man at Cappuccino. And Irene didn't know when I said, "Oh, yeah, your father told me, before you ever go to a council meeting, you need to dress up." And that was just his words of wisdom to some young kid that obviously had a lot of growing up to do. And so, your family has always been involved, always been active in various facets, from the Girl Scout House to Troop 72, and even if it's Art Rise that was on San Mateo Avenue, to your father directing traffic at St. Bruno's Church with vigor and passion. But as I've looked back, and you brought some items back to City Hall, and I've been going through those, it brought me up to some history, which is always kind of fascinating to me, because I wanted to be a history teacher, but obviously, that didn't happen. But it was things throughout the, let's just go back 10 years, that have been done. I came across something in your box about the San Bruno Creek Flood Control Project back from March of 1968, obviously before our time. But at the same time, it was something that was thought of back then, and there's photos, I believe your dad, dad, father, Mike took, and that was back in '67, of the canal at Bel Air, of the overflows, the SSOs. It was horrible. And how much it's evolved. In the last 10 years, nine years, in asking staff to run under the sewer projects, which you have been very diligent about, under sewer projects, we have spent $46 million. In the water project, we've spent $20 million. These are hard decisions, hard choices, but an infrastructure that is obviously very needed. And these were things that happened under your watch, with the sewer master plan completed, with the water master plan completed, with the upgrade sewer master plan completed within the last 10 years. Also looking...
And I want to acknowledge my CEO from Abasca, who's here. She and I started out together. I'm going to miss her and all of that. So, thank you. Thank you, councilpeople from other cities. We have worked together on many things, on CCAG and Abasca and Joint Powers Board and all the other things. My neighbors who are here, it's, thank you for putting up with all the cars and the signs and all the other things that go on. Kevin, you sweetheart, he really was in my sixth grade class. I remember parent-teacher conference with your dad. Gene Mullen, he was, you know, our Assemblyman also, so it's been quite a family tradition. And unfortunately, my mother isn't able to attend. She was, she's 91, and this, don't tell her I said that. This weather's not so great for her, but she and my father really did start me out and started all of us out. The pictures that Rico has, if you can share them with the council, they show my neighborhood, you know, with water up to here and raw sewage everywhere, and it was not a pretty picture. So, actually, my grandfather started it. My mother's father started trying to fix it up. So, I'll stop there. You know, politicians and microphones. We have to learn when to stop. So, thank you also very, very much for coming. It's not a beautiful night out, and I appreciate the fact that you are here and helped me celebrate my last council meeting, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and adjourn for some refreshments in the lobby, and then we'll reconvene back at 7 o'clock for the regularly scheduled council meeting.